All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this workshop with Temple City Council for July sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, let's just hop right in. Doesn't look like we have anybody has signed up for public comments. So we'll move on to um discuss if maybe needed any regular meeting uh. Adam, both consent and regular agenda council anything anybody needs to talk about? And oh, Mike, welcome. We see you up there. Is you on mute?
You're on mute if you're speaking.
It's taking that long for the words. We'll let him catch up.
No, yeah, yeah, six, six or seven.
Okay, let's bring it back. We are. So anything on the agenda that we need to speak about either council or staff? Anything?
Somebody make something else.
Nothing? Otherwise, you're about to get a budget present day.
This is Bryn's shining love.
You know what you're getting, thanks.
Of course.
Okay, all right. So if there's nothing, then we'll just move on. We'll just go ahead and move on to Adam two.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, Mike, we heard you loud and clear. Are you still there, Mike?
I'm here.
All right, do you have anything on the agenda you wanna um?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, then uh are you ready for Ravi? What do we do?
Yes.
Is our virtual option not up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is gonna take.
I'm not ready to have a presentation.
All right, so um council and other staff, you know, we've got the uh they should go in. With uh public comments, you know, when when we we speak and not. So I asked Kathy yesterday to put together a synopsis kind of 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 um of of um. Of this new ruling or ordinance or whatever we're gonna call it. And I asked you just to put some bullet points so that as people come in. Um that they can see under what authority that the city of Temple City Council is doing that. So while we're waiting on the presentation, um so I asked Kathy to put something together. Something that people can walk in, grab, read, take it home with them, et cetera. And so Kathy, if you don't mind kind of running through that, just so everybody will know that um what's there, I would appreciate it.
Sure, now Kathy, before you start, you're saying this is printed. So we're we have some issues with this.
Well, some people may have some issues.
So if you recall, in December, you adopted your government standards and. Expectations, and one of those was a discussion that we had had several times regarding the public comment. Time limits and topics for discussion and and all of that. And at the end of the day, the decision was to. Limit the public comments, that's the part that's not on the agenda. To residents, to property owners, to business owners in Temple, the people who are directly affected by your decisions. Um that the decision at the time was made to delay implementation to just to give people a chance to get ready for it. And in June. We let people know this the last meeting under the old rule and starting next meeting. Your last meeting, and we will start abiding by the policy that is adopted. So there's been some pushback from some people who are not residents of Temple, challenging the. All the constitutional policy. Um I know I had CJ Grusham speaking at the last meeting. Saying that he thinks like it's not a constitutional distinction, and I disagree with him wholeheartedly. Uh I think that clearly we can make distinctions as long as those distinctions are reasonable. And enforced equally in as long as they're not content based. So um there there is not a lot of case law on this. And I think the reason why there's not is because it's clear that this is a distinction we could make, so it's not challenged often. There is a case that's directly on point that's from Florida, but it is applying United States Constitution, which is the same constitution that we work under. Um and it looking at this exact issue and saying that yes, that council did have the absolute right to set that distinction. As long as everyone within that category is being treated equally. So they could make separate categories of residents versus non-residents. As long as everyone within each category was treated the same. Um and so that's what we've done, and I feel confident that that the policy that you've set. Is constitutional. Um and and this is a policy that that we are set to review in the future. It's intended to be reviewed every way we can. Council members on board after the May election, so that will be. So you will be able to have time decide whether it's still a policy to want to proceed with. But I do again feel confident that it is constitutional, is legal. And so there is a fact sheet that that we will have. Right by the sign-in sheets that does just kind of give the background of the policy. And then a reference some of the bullet points, some of the the case law that's. Relevant to the change, so we'll have that for the first one.
Kathy, is this going to push us in any way or any other council in any way? To mandating that people give a street address that can be checked so that we know people theoretically. People say resident, you know, you get one.
Yeah, and I think on our sign-in sheet, do we ask for their actual residence address? Do we just ask if they are a Temple resident? Or just yes or no? Okay. And and it's kind of honor-based. Um we do ask. Well, first, the question is, are you speaking on an agenda item? Because if you recall, anyone can speak on an agenda item or in a public hearing, whether they're a resident or not. So there's a question, are you speaking on an agenda item, yes or no? And are you wanting to do public comments? Are you a resident in Temple or business owner?
Working on getting the kiosk, you know, automated, and so it'll be directly connected to our Mac system. So they can put in their address or business address, so it will automatically, it won't let you go any further. You know, say you're you're not allowed to speak, you know, on public comments or whatever if you're in a public hearing. So yes, it will be your, it'll it'll be linked to our G I system once we get that up.
You know, there's been some concern with some folks about giving out their address for privacy reasons. Um does that then become public information? Whatever's entered into the kiosk?
I mean, I, it's not generating, not generating documents, but you know, you want to Google or fax or, you know, bell count or whatever.
And even if someone at some point has to write their address somewhere, that does not make it public. It's, yes, it would be requested through the public information.
They're concerned about saying something verbal in the state.
Sure.
So, you know, I think of like Bobby Thompson. Backs that come up and, you know, normally tells us how great things are and then says, and now y'all need to go. If if Bill O'Leary on the agenda, she's a Temple resident.
She can still.
Okay, so she, a Temple resident can take their three minutes and talk about anything they want.
Most cities, I say most, many cities only allow comments on a good item.
Sure.
So y'all didn't want to do that. You wanted to let people who live in Temple or own property or business in Temple to talk about absolutely anything. So that's why you may regret.
Yeah, sorry, I can't keep that in my brain, so, okay. So council, any questions for Kathy?
Thank you for doing that.
Very helpful, thank you.
In that way, you ultimately what you want, you want to give a citizen. If 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 a ruling is made like this, you want to tell them why, you want to hand them something that. Other than say, because we said no, right? No one, no one likes that, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
We'll see, we'll see. Ready? All right, so second item is receive a presentation on the post fiscal year twenty twenty-four uh business plan. And could even not limit to an overview of the post twenty twenty-four annual budget this month.
Thank you. And council member Long is very correct. This is my favorite presentation of the past year. So this is um the first uh uh overview of the proposed fiscal year twenty-four business plan. Which includes um our strategic plan that identifies the various goals and initiatives. That we want to accomplish over the next six years. The financial plan that identifies the resources necessary to implement those projects and initiatives. The annual budget, which is the which is the formal document that officially appropriates the upcoming fiscal year twenty-four. Uh budget for um purposes of complying with state law and charter requirements. And then the capital plan, which is our multi-year plan uh regarding capital improvement uh programs. The reason that we uh present the budget in the contact fixer business plan. Is so that we're not asking you to look at something, one piece of the puzzle at a time. But rather, you're able to see the entire picture and understand how all of the pieces fit together. Uh for the uh further ends of your goal um to accomplish Temple as a place that you love to call home. And that uh your organization provides exceptional service without exception. Um we also have adopted organizational values, including commitment, innovation, integrity, accountability, and collaboration. And you all have identified through your strategic plan five focus areas. High-performing organization, communication and collaboration, places and spaces, smart growth and public safety. Within those five public or within those five uh focus areas, we have a total of ten strategic goals that have been identified within the strategic plan. And uh today I want to highlight some of the um initiatives and projects that are proposed within the business plan. Um that are intended to help us further progress towards accomplishing these ten goals. So starting with our goals around places and spaces, including having neighborhoods where people love to live. We are recommending this year um an expansion to our Love Where You Live Neighborhood Planning Program. And as council will recall, this program was established back in twenty nineteen. With an initial eighteen different uh neighborhood planning districts um that were intended to. Um allow us to work with uh the stakeholders within those individual neighborhoods, residents, business owners. Church members and other interested stakeholders to develop specific uh neighborhood plans uh for. Uh the revitalization of uh our neighborhoods. And so the initial eighteen neighborhoods uh were focused really. Um largely around um our downtown core, um most of them uh being in North and East Temple. And it has been a very successful program from my perspective. We have largely done three to four uh neighborhood, new neighborhood plans each year, working through those uh those original eighteen districts. So at this point, um we would like to propose to council that we uh take a look at expanding out. Um at other areas, particularly in South and West Temple, um some of uh the older neighborhoods in that in those areas. Um that would benefit from some specific planning. So you can see there, we have completed many of the plans. We have um three currently underway this fiscal year, Las Cruces, Bird Creek and Barnhart. And then um we'll round out the year with Northwest Hills District Neighborhood Plan. We're proposing an addition additional seven uh neighborhood planning districts, which would bring the total neighborhood planning district number up to twenty-four. And then we're also proposing the addition of nine strategic corridors. Right now. And we only have one corridor that was part of the original eighteen districts, and that was the I thirty-five corridor. We also feel like several other corridors are ripe for planning um and and making sure that we're preserving. Um those important strategic uh areas of our community and making improvements to them. So you can see there kind of generally uh what a schedule could look like uh to begin or to expand out that program uh into the future.
Bryn, future is after the six years.
That's that's correct. Three of the corridors are not proposed within the six-year plan. But we have identified them as um important corridors that we believe we should. We as we add an additional year in the future, we should fund those and apply thirty. Uh and so going along with um the actual if uh the actual uh adoption and creation of our neighborhood plans. Um you all know that I love a good plan, but more than that, I love a plan that's implemented. And so. And last year, you all approved our Places and Spaces Capital Improvement Program. And that is a new C I P program intended to uh provide funding necessary to implement the projects that are coming out of our neighborhood. Planning um district plans as well as our Parks Master Plan. Um this is a total of an eighty million dollar capital improvement program. Eighteen million of those projects are currently underway. Uh recently approved by you all. And so we've got sixty-two million dollars um in uh future projects in the remaining. Six years of the plan in twenty twenty-four. Uh so this is not all of the projects that would be covered by the six-year plan. But these are just the projects proposed for funding in twenty twenty-four. Uh we would uh recommend improvements to West Temple Park, Mont Rosenberg Park, Walker Park, Colequit Park. Uh Miller Springs Nature Center and Gober Recreation Center. As well as uh the implementation of the Nettles Park improvements as recommended in the Garden District Neighborhood Planning. Uh Master Plan, Storybook Grove, as shown in the Downtown District Plan. Fourteenth Street improvements, as shown in the Ferguson Park Plan, Avenue D improvements, also represented in the Ferguson Park Plan. And then continuing our program for implementing district identification, which is monument signage, street toppers, banners. To help provide that distinct identity for each of the neighborhoods. Uh and we are uh recommending the next four on the list be implemented in twenty-four, which would include Temple Heights, Las Cruces. Bird Creek and Barnhart. In addition, we're recommending um some revamps to some of our grant programs, as well as an additional grant program. So education and recreation and community enhancement partnership grants. These are two grant programs that would be available to nonprofit community partners to help us accomplish strategic. Um initiatives within uh the strategic plan that we feel like would be best accomplished by a nonprofit partner. So this could be things like home uh improvement grants, and it could be things like unfortunate pool programs. Um uh any number of different things that we could partner with the nonprofit sector within the community to to deliver services. Um in uh areas of need. And then uh the third grant program is our Neighborhood Improvement Grants. This is a new uh program that is coming out of. Uh recommendations within the Community Development Program. These grants would be available to individual property owners and business owners within the neighborhood planning districts. For exterior improvements, uh physical improvements to their homes or businesses. So very similar to the Strategic Investment Zone Grant Program, it would be a matching grant program, reimbursement-based. Um but focused on residential and small businesses within our neighborhood planning districts. We're also recommending a grant coordinator and housing resource coordinator to join Nancy's team um in future years. To continue to provide programming in that area. And the continued support for the Temple Revitalization Corporation, which is our recently created. Um local government nonprofit that allows us to really focus on real estate. Um acquisition and conveyance in accordance with our neighborhood plans. And providing a lot more flexibility and tools than we otherwise have. Um related to the goal um that we have beautiful spaces and unique experiences. We are recommending the establishment of a Parks and Recreation Maintenance Program. So council may recall, a couple of years ago, you first approved a similar program around maintenance maintenance. Where we determined that there was an optimal level of annual investment um that needed to be made. To help ensure that our roadways were well-maintained. Um we feel like a similar program um in our Parks and Recreation area would be very helpful. So that we can maintain existing parks and recreation systems um without having to rely on bond uh program funding. So these would be things like replacing existing playgrounds or different um amenities within our parks and recreation system. We would start in a very similar way that we did with pavement maintenance, uh beginning with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in twenty-four. And then continuing to build upon that until uh we reach what we believe is an optimal funding level of one point five million dollars annually. Uh for the replacement of our amenities and assets within our park system.
Bryn, can you stop one sec?
Yeah.
Uh I in looking through this, I I was a bit confused by this. Does this mean like in twenty-four, it's two hundred and fifty thousand and twenty-five, is it a total of five hundred thousand or is it? Okay, so each week, year, it's the total that we see.
Yes, it's hard to go from zero to one point five in a single operating budget. But once you have something built into your base budget, it's easier easier for us to absorb incremental increases. So that's why we're recommending stepping into the full um recommended investment in this manner.
Thank you.
We're also recommending some additional staffing in our Parks and Recreation Department, including a landscape landscape spray technician. Uh several different uh additional maintenance workers, a recreation specialist position focused on after-school programming. And an assistant golf professional. We're also continuing to recommend our Park Ranger Program in in future fiscal years that would allow some more enhanced law enforcement. Uh presence within our park system. Uh we continue to recommend um the uh master plan we developed for Hillcrest Cemetery in F Y twenty-four. And then a new recommendation this year is to um. Uh plan uh to to develop a master plan for Sammons Golf Course. So um as we look. Council member Long, you've been a big advocate for looking to the future and making sure that we have adequate plans for the expansion of the facility. So um it is my recommendation that we pursue a master plan so that we know. Um what future investments and real estate acquisition um we need to pursue to maximize the the future success.
I think Jeff can give that to you in about an hour and a half.
Sounds great. Uh we're also recommending a little restructure, a little bit of a restructure in our Recreation Division. Uh making sure that each of our teams have a dedicated manager position. Um and some consistency across um how those um areas are are structured. So this would add three new positions uh to the Recreation Division. Um and do a few reclassifications so that we have uh measures for each team and consistency in how those. Um areas are structured. Also, a new recommendation recommendation this year is the development of an Arts and Culture Master Plan. This would allow us to partner with all of the agencies and organizations within our community. Uh that are focused on providing arts and cultural resources. So think Cultural Activity Center, Temple Civic Theater, Temple College. Even even T I S D um and really making sure that we have a shared vision. And shared plan for the future of how we support and enhance arts and cultural investments within our community. And we're also recommending implementation of the recently completed special event strategic plan. So as council will recall, this would add a new um major headline or event um within our community. A country music festival proposed in the fall would make significant um investments in our holiday. And uh Christmas programming, events and programming. Um continue to uh invest in our airshow and see that expand in the future, as well as a reimagined. Bloom and Fest, um and then multiple other uh supporting events throughout the year. To really make sure we have a strong fabric of events going on within our community. Both uh to serve as recreation opportunities for our residents and to attract tourism and visitors. Uh to our community. We're also recommending um the continuation and the expansion of our heritage art arts and tourism partnership grants. The these um are grants available to nonprofit partners um including. Uh Cultural Activities Center, Temple Civic Theater, uh organizations like that 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 provide arts programming within. Uh our community and allows us to support those programs. We're also recommending schematic design for the central branch, uh central library branch uh be added into the business plan. As we come out of just completing our library master plan. And which included recommendations for expansion and reimagining what um our central branch would look like. As well as adding um additional branch libraries um in neighborhoods throughout our community. So we are recommending site acquisition for the three um neighborhood branch libraries that are recommended. Um as well as um one uh branch within the six-year period would um be. Uh advanced to design, construction, um and operation. And also in uh in coordination with master plan recommendations, we're recommending the addition of assistant director positions. Within our Library Services Department, an additional youth services librarian and a facility manager position. Um in the uh focus area of communication and collaboration. Um and in furtherance of our goal to have open and responsive communication with our community. And council, you've been incredibly supportive over the last several years of investments in our communications and marketing team. And I think they've done a fantastic job of really elevating the way that we provide information to our own residents. And also the face that we present to the rest of the world about who the city of Temple is and what our quality of life here. Um and uh is. And so we do have a few additional recommendations in future years. Um nothing in the upcoming year, but uh a few additions to round out that team. Um in the focus area of smart growth and around our goal uh to be a city that supports well-managed growth and development to promote a thriving economy. We've also um under your leadership made significant investments in our development services team over the last couple of years. Um but we do have a few additional positions recommended. Accommodation building inspector in our upcoming year, and then in the future year, a planning manager. And a business navigator position uh specifically focused on helping small business. Um startups um navigate uh through the development services process. Um in order to establish their business within the city of Temple. We're also um recommending continued uh funding and support for our partnership with the Temple Economic Development Corporation. For um incentive negotiation and industrial marketing. Temple Economic Development Corporation for incentive negotiation and industrial marketing services. For the goal of infrastructure and systems that support exceptional services and community growth, as Tracy reported to you just a few weeks ago, we once again have the largest capital improvement program in the history of our community underway as we speak, with over half a billion dollars in active capital improvement programs right now. And when you take into consideration what's to come in the six-year plan, we have an additional $534 million in capital improvement program in our future outlook. So we'll talk more specifically about these areas, but I wanted to highlight the significance of that investment to what, to our preparation for growth and our investment in our existing neighborhoods, and also just highlight the fact that with that level of capital improvement investment, we are recommending some additional project management resources, both in the engineering team, which primarily does our utility and public infrastructure-related capital project management. So this would involve an additional project engineer in FY24 under Richard's team, and then additional project manager support in '25 and '26 in Belinda's team in Facility Services, which primarily manages facility and parks-related projects for us. And then in FY28, an additional project engineer back in Public Works as well.
Two back up, two? The 534, back up on that one later? Is that over, is that between now and '28? How many years is that?
Yes.
Then?
Twenty-nine.
Okay, that's a lot.
Mm-hmm. It is a lot.
I was hoping you'd divide that by twenty.
So drilling down a little bit into our Mobility Capital Improvement Program, there's $130 million in future projects recommended over the six-year planning period. For FY24 specifically, the projects that are recommended include reconstruction of 42nd Street, Little River Road, Patrick Bluff Road, Poison Oak Road Phase Two, also the construction of Phase Two of the Georgetown Railroad Project, and then beginning design for Young Avenue and Lower Troy Road Reconstruction, Henderson Street Reconstruction, and MLK Drive Phase One. We're also recommending continuation of our pavement preservation program. So this is, we talked a little bit about this when we were talking about parks, but this is a program that you all approved back in FY2022. So this will, '24 will be the third year of investment, bringing the total to $750,000 in our operating budget for pavement preservation. Specifically, what you saw happen this last few months with the Slurry Seal, that really, I think, was a really successful program. And then we still, as part of our Mobility Capital Improvement Program, have $2.5 million proposed for more long-term pavement preservation, such as Mill and Overlay. So this funding is just related to operating maintenance like Slurry Seal. We also have quite a few mobility maintenance crews proposed in the upcoming few years. So most of these you've seen before, but one new proposal this year is an additional ride-of-way crew focused on ride-of-way and pavement marking maintenance, a street patching crew, a forestry crew, which is our tree trimming crew. It would, this would add an additional crew. We only have one at this moment. Then in '26, an additional ride-of-way crew focused on alley maintenance, and then in '27, a sign crew, and '28, an additional street reconstruction crew. In FY24, we're also recommending funding for enhanced transit services through our partnership with the Hill Country Transit District. I would love the district to come and give a very detailed proposal to you all in the next meeting or two, but just quickly to highlight what this would do is largely implement the recommendations that were made in the Mobility Master Plan around transit. It would eliminate fixed route services and replace that with micro-transit services, which are door-to-door services for our citizens, our residents. So much more similar to kind of an Uber or Lyft experience, where you call for a ride through an app, or you can still call via phone, and then you would be picked up at your location and taken directly to your destination. The proposal does still include one fixed route, which would be a connector route between Coppers Cove and Temple, allowing continuing regional connectivity. For Utility Capital Improvement Program, we have $234 million of projects proposed in the next six years. For '24 specifically, the project that's on the list is the Temple Belt and Wastewater Plant Expansion, and this will be our focus next year as it is a $65 million expansion. So this will be the project for '24. Related to utility services, we do have several additional maintenance crews proposed, four in water, three in sewer. We also have four water operators proposed to staff the expanded membrane treatment plant that's nearing completion, two utility foreman positions, and two additional environmental program techs. As it relates to solid waste, lots of routes proposed over the six years, including new residential routes, both garbage and recycling, in FY25 and '26, as well as '28 and '29, roll-off routes in '25, '27 and '29, brush and bulk route, and additional route in '25, and additional commercial front load routes in '25 and '28. We're also proposing, continuing to propose, the addition of a litter crew to the solid waste team in FY27. And then some swing driver positions, which just as we continue to add routes, we want to make sure that we have those swing drivers onboard so that when primary driver is on leave or in training, the route is still able to be covered. A recycling assistant position that will allow us to expand recycling opportunities to multifamily complexes, additional maintenance workers, and customer service representative. And then a new proposal for FY29 is a code compliance officer that would be embedded within solid waste and help us focus on making sure that illegal dumping and other issues related to waste management are being enforced. For our focus area around public safety, we have a goal of having a safe and healthy community. So several initiatives in this area, including the expansion of our patrol unit to go from an eight district to a ten district patrol system, as well as to move towards 10-hour shifts and just have the patrol resources that we need to serve our community. We are recommending training officers be added to the department as we invest in the expansion of our public safety training facility. Want to make sure that we have the staffing necessary to implement those training programs. We've got several recommendations related to investments in our Criminal Investigations Unit, including an additional property crimes detection detective unit, a supervisor for our crime scene technicians, an additional detective that is focused on electronic forensic investigation. We're also recommending the final staffing phase of our Violent Crime Enforcement Squad and the expansion of our Neighborhood and District Community policing program. So altogether, over the next six years, that's 32 additional sworn police officer positions and five civilians in support of that, of the department. We're also recommending additional animal services, field officers, and shelter technicians, including in the upcoming fiscal year, as well as future years within the plan. This will allow us the resources we need to operate the expanded animal shelter, as well as continue to provide field services officers within our community as we continue to experience significant growth. For fire, we are recommending the addition of two new squad units that would be fully staffed. You can see the apparatus on the right-hand side of the screen. That's an example of a squad unit. It's a smaller vehicle than a traditional engine or truck, and it allows us to have an additional response company out of an existing station to primarily respond to medical service calls. As Council will recall, while we do not provide ambulance transit service, we do provide advanced life support services, and we have paramedics in each of our companies. We are the first arriving unit for emergency medical services, and this is a more efficient way for us to provide response in many of those situations. And it also makes sure that we have multiple companies out of some of our busiest stations, and the stations where we're seeing some significant growth. So squad units, we have already two squad units within our department, and we're proposing two more, one to be located in South Temple and one in West Temple. We're also recommending training officers in the fire department, very similar to in police, as we expand out our public safety training facility. We want to make sure we have the staffing resources necessary to provide excellent training to our department. We're recommending additional resources in our Fire Marshal's Office, including three additional deputy fire marshal positions. As a reminder, our fire marshals are both critical in our development process, as they do plan review for fire-related code issues, and they also serve a very important role in fire investigations and inspections of facilities to ensure safety of our community. We're also recommending the establishment of a second response district within the community. So this would add battalion chiefs and driver positions, so that we have a battalion chief over essentially west part of the community, west of I-35, and one over the stations and the companies that are located east of I-35. This is part of the recommendations coming out of the Fire Master Plan, and ensures an appropriate span of control, and as we have, often have multiple major incidents happening at one time within our community, it allows a battalion chief to be at the scene and not having to split their time between two major events. We're also, as we're adding additional firefighter staffing, we need to make sure that we're adding some floater positions or some swing positions to ensure that we continue to meet minimum staffing coverage while folks are on leave or in training. We're also recommending, based on the Fire Master Plan, the addition of one more person on each ladder truck shift. So we currently have three ladder trucks within the department, and as you can imagine, a ladder truck arriving at a scene has a bit more of a complex setup process. You've got, in addition to laying the hose, you also need to deal with the ladder itself. And so having a four-person team versus a three-person team is recommended to increase the response time of those units. We're also recommending the construction, equipping, and staffing of Fire Station Number Nine, which is recommended as part of the Fire Master Plan in West Temple. This involves the addition of 14 new positions, including captain drivers and firefighters. So this station is proposed to come online in FY28. And in case you were wondering, that is a total of 53 additional firefighter positions over the course of the six-year plan, and seven civilian positions in support of the Another part of our capital improvement program is our Public Safety Capital Improvement Program, which is proposed at an additional $65 million over the six-year planning window. For FY24, this includes the construction of the Public Safety Training Campus Classroom, as well as the indoor shooting range and evidence storage building, the replacement of our arc truck at the airport, a fire engine replacement within the fire department, and the squad purchases that we spoke of earlier. Also recommending additional code compliance officers throughout the plan. And the new, this year, is the recommendation to begin design and construction of the Arbor of Hope, which Council will recall is the centralized campus for the provision of services to support population experiencing homelessness, including consolidated services of substance abuse treatment and mental health resources. The financial plan recommends the first phase of construction, which includes group housing shelters for both men and women, as well as administration offices that will house the services that are needed, congregant kitchen and shower restroom facilities, and then individual non-congregant, many shelters that are proposed in the first place. Last focus area is high-performing organization. So our goal of being an organization committed to performance excellence, we have several projects related to making sure that we continue to invest in technology. So this includes the continuation of the implementation of our new records management system, the niche records management system for our police department, as well as several other investments throughout the organization, and staffing in our technology department to support us as we continue to grow as an organization. We're also recommending significant investment in capital equipment so that we continue to maintain our fleet that is necessary to provide the services to our community. We are also recommending resources as we continue to invest in high-quality facilities. We have over $25 million, just over $25 million in facility-related projects proposed over the six-year plan. But we're also proposing a facility maintenance program. Again, this is very similar to the concept around the parks maintenance and the pavement maintenance program that would allow us to do maintenance-related replacements and upgrades to our facilities outside of bond funding. So things like carpet replacement, elevator refurbishments, things that we know that need to be done on a routine basis. Same structure here, recommending an initial investment of $250,000, working up to $1.5 million optimal annual funding. Around the goal of being an efficient, transparent, and accountable government, I'm proud to say that we continue to have a wonderful, long-term rating of a double A that has just been reaffirmed with a stable outlook. Some of the comments from our most recent standard of course ratings report note that this rating is tied to very strong management, our formal long-term financial and capital planning, our strong institutional framework, and very strong reserves on liquidity. Everything we've just talked about is wonderful, but if you do not have financial soundness and you do not have the ability to have the financial resources to implement these programs, you can't do it. So we are continuing to recommend a strong focus on fiscal soundness and fiscal conservative, fiscally-conservative budgeting, as well as a few additional resources in future years in Finance Department to help us to continue to provide strong management of our financial resources. And then I think, last but not least, talented and dedicated employees who have a heart for service, certainly not least. You've heard me say a million times that we are a service-based organization. Our mission is to provide exceptional service without exception, and the way that we do that is through our employees. We, with very few exceptions, we don't make anything. We, with very few exceptions, we don't make anything, we don't produce anything. What we do is we provide services to our community. And if we want those services to be exceptional, then we need to be able to attract, retain, train and develop exceptional employees, the best and the brightest. So council knows that we've long had a practice of taking a look at compensation-related items for civil service one year, which is our our sworn police and firefighter position, and then general government in the other year. This year was civil service. So we do have some significant recommendations around compensation for our police and firefighters. And so just as an example for fire, this is our recommendations related to the firefighter position. And I would, I'll ask Tara to give a much more detailed presentation at a future workshop. But just to give you a snapshot, you can see the bars on the left side of the screen are our peer cities, those that kind of in the reddish pink color. That's what their current salaries are at for a firefighter once they've gone through academy and are ready to to be on a truck providing service. The green bar towards the right-hand side of the screen is our current. The blue bar is the median for all of our peer cities, and the yellow at the far right of the screen is what we're proposing for starting salary for the upcoming fiscal year. And then in police, as you well know, we have many, many vacancies. And so our goal here is to to really try to take every opportunity we can to be the department of choice. Again, very similar setup. You have on the left-hand side of the screen, the cities, our peer cities, our median, what we are right now and what we're proposing for next year, which is very incredibly competitive. So for the annual budget, all total, and the proposed budget comes in at two-hundred-and-sixty-one-point-six million in expenditures for FY twenty-twenty-four. For general funds, the primary sources of revenue include sales tax, ad valorem or property tax, as well as solid waste charges. Expenditures are largely in personnel. Again, we are a service-based operation, so what we do is deliver services through our people as well as operations. The filed budget is based on a estimated property tax rate of sixty-one-point-three cents, which is unchanged from our current rate, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. Solid waste rates, you can see Temple there compared to our peer cities. As it relates to water and wastewater, the vast majority of revenue is from charges for service for water and wastewater. Expenditures are in operations, debt and debt service and personnel expenditures. Proposed utility rates, you can see there where Temple falls as it relates to our peer cities. And then just as a reminder, the city of Temple does not charge impact fees. So all of these cities that you see here, they, in addition to rates, they also charge, in some cases, very significant per lot impact fees for connecting to the water and wastewater system, both for residential and commercial projects. So all of our revenue is based on rates, none of it on impact fees.
Every, every one of those has impact.
Except Brian.
Good to know.
Yes. And for our future here, so just a quick reminder of where we came from. We've had some some time together in both staff and council retreats through the months of February, March and April. We filed our preliminary budget with you all on June twenty-second. We're here today on July sixth for the initial presentation, overview presentation of the proposed business plan. Tonight, you do have an action item on your agenda. It's simply to schedule the public hearing on the city's budget. So that's the only decision you're making is to schedule the public hearing. We have opportunities through the the remainder of July and August to have additional city council budget workshop. I do have some topics that I would like to go and that I want to go into a deeper dive with you. But if you also have topics that you're interested in learning more about and having a more detailed presentation, please let me know over the next couple of days, and we'll get that set up and scheduled. On July twentieth, at your next regular city council meeting, we will have, assuming you schedule it tonight, we will have the public hearing on the city's budget. You will also need to discuss and vote on a proposed tax rate. So recall that that tax rate that the preliminary budget is filed on is a flat rate, no changes from last year. Also recall that we do not receive the certified tax roll until July twenty-fifth is the deadline for us to receive it. So once we get that information, there may be some revisions that that we're able to consider. We might be able to bring that rate further down. So what you want to do on July twentieth is set the rate at the maximum that you would consider, especially if we don't have all the certified rule information. And then when you consider it, when you consider the rate for adoption, you can bring it down, but you can't go up. And then in August is the first readings of the approving the tax roll and levying taxes and setting the tax rate. And then on August seventeenth is your final decision date. You'll have your public hearing on the proposed tax rate, and then you'll be asked to consider the adoption of the annual budget, the approval of the tax roll and the tax levy and the final approval of the tax rate. So again, if you all have things you want to get more detail about in a future presentation, give that some thought over the next few days and let me know what you're interested in, and we'll go from there. Thirty minutes? Maybe a little, but that wasn't so.
Now, I always enjoy that difference between sales tax and ad valorem tax. It seems like every year that spread just gets wider and wider.
Yeah, was that thirty-three percent?
One concern that I always have about that, you know, with that sales tax number being so high. Of course, obviously, it ups our ad valorem taxes, right? I get that, but I just wonder how long that's sustainable? Or just, you know, based on the overall growth Texas and living where we do in Texas that we could just anticipate that that sales tax to at least remain stable, if not continue to grow? Do you have any thoughts or you've you've been doing this a while?
Yes, I do. As you will note, when I present the quarterly statements or financial statements with the sales tax compared to budget, I think we're going to end the year, I think it's forecasting around four-point-five million over budget. Because, and that's happened the last two years because our conservative budgeting practice, you know, we're thinking this growth is not, this double digit is not going to continue, but it still continues. So we're always, and even prior to that, we budgeted conservative where we were trying to like hit it around a million dollars over budget. So it allows you to adjust. So it's not going to be a year, you forecasted it this and we're way under.
Right.
We we intentionally forecast, try to. And but it's the last two to three years because of the double-digit growth. I mean, we we missed it.
Epidemic also in there. And to me, I'd rather.
I mean, there wasn't a decrease.
But we didn't know.
No, no, I understand, but that, because I think we I think that pandemic year, I think that we even budgeted maybe eighty percent of the previous year.
Yes.
Right, we 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 backed off because like this, you know, the economy's slowing down and in a recession. And even with the, and we consistently watch the, like, the Temple Economic Indicator Report. There's things we're consistently watching in the economy. And if we ever needed to adjust during the year, we did, we went to.
But increased growth means increased purchasing. So even as growth stabilizes to a degree, the previously increased growth will continue to buy.
Correct. But again, is it, I I think.
Are you talking about on the on the city's expense side or you talking about on the sales tax side?
Yeah.
And recall too, Temple, Temple has a more diversified base, just like they do with their property tax, ad valorem taxes. And recessions, we're not as volatile. It's not all based on consumer spending.
Right, no, not at all.
More, a lot of building and industry and different. It's, I think we're like, like Georgetown and Waco, they're like seventy-five percent retail, and we were like fifty, sixty percent, I mean, a lot less retail. So we're not.
Well, we're good, that's. We're not as good for us because a lot of our purchasing, residential purchasing is, our retail purchasing is not happening in town, unfortunately.
Amazon, the way it works.
Oh, sure, yeah, so we get that, whatever that that law was called.
Right.
The tax base, pardon?
Wayfair.
Yes.
Yeah. And we really are so fortunate that we're not like some of our neighbors where they're just a bedroom community.
Yes.
And really depending on those households. Very diverse.
Very fortunate.
The penny and a quarter shift from M and O to INS, is that for to account for inflation and borrowing costs?
The shift is, you'll recall, two to three years ago with the Senate bill that compressed.
Yeah, three and a half percent.
We're at, we're at the three and a half percent. And with the INS, it supports some of the new capital projects to that increase there.
Thing that I.
Which.
Okay, no, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One-point-two-five cents for what it's funding. We're combining that with growth in the tax base.
Right.
That's pretty powerful that you can do what you can do with that increase.
Yeah. It was a couple of meetings ago when I said, you know, cities are never, I think the city of Temple is less far behind than other cities, right? Like, we're always, we always, I think cities tend to run behind because you have to, you have to plan well, and that takes time, et cetera. But I think everything in the budget as presented is not only defensible, but needed, right? There's, there are neat items that set this community apart in that budget, but at the same time, they're all needed items, and there's, there's not a lot of shiny objects, right? There's not a lot of fluff, it's, it's needed stuff, but done well. And to me, that's, that's exciting. Think that versus other communities that were able to afford some of those things. So kudos to staff and the six-year plan and that does make a difference.
Speaking of kudos, Tracy's team does so much work to get us to this point. So please, I know you do appreciate her, but please know how much work that she and her team do to be able to allow us to present something like this to you with a flat tax rate or, you know, hopefully something that we can come back once we get the certified role and reeval, reevaluate. And then just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention two people specifically, Jennifer Emerson and Sherry Pover. They spend so much time on this effort, and they are so passionate and so qualified, and we're very blessed to have them in our organization and in in the leadership positions that they're in. And I was, had a conversation yesterday with with the folks and, you know, someone said, how, how can you do all of that? Because we've got a great, we've, we've got a well-managed, very, very well-financed, managed organization, and and that, that's, that is the foundation of why we can provide these services to our community.
I'd like to add to that, too. I think the finance staff is online, too. All the department heads.
Yes.
They work lots of time and work well with with the finance staff and making all of these things work.
And Tracy, we know you were under extreme pressure because of your mother's illness. It's a penultimate moment during this, we're so glad she's doing okay.
Thank you. And again, staff, great staff went through that. Thanks for all the prayers.
Keep collecting extra money. Good. Well, I think I say this every year, but it's fun to be on council in this town. We're not worried about how Phil filed. Right? Right, Kenny? But we can pass it off and let you handle it. Kenny, don't worry, we got you. Very good. As always, thanks to staff. All good work. We just get to vote yes, right? This is nice. So appreciate the budget books. Will they look a little earlier than you for this? Yeah, take some time, council go through it. Be sure that your pet project was addressed. And we'll move forward. Is there anything else or we?
Tim, can you hear me?
For your new four.
Yes.
Wonderful news, was glad to see that online.
Just graduated the academy and we just hired six.
Six? Did you say six?
For a total of ten or total of six?
No, we haven't, it's a total of ten. But we're still down significantly.
Oh, of course, of course.
Four came out of the academy, six are going in.
Oh, I got it, I got it, okay. Very good, congratulations.
Mike?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention the, back in the presentation, Brent talked about the the little smaller trucks for for running out to smaller fire calls and with paramedics and such. I appreciate that. I've been concerned for a long time about us running big fire trucks for every little thing, and we just happened to see they're basically doing what we're proposing here in London. We saw that the other day and talked to, our driver was familiar with it. So I like that a lot.
Thank you.
I'll save you.
Mike, are you in a car or on the plane?
I'm in my hotel room.
Oh, with a round window?
No, it's a light, a lamp. I'm in Scotland, Edinburgh, Scotland, in a hotel.
When are you coming home?
We're gonna leave at three and, at four in the morning. I'll be home tomorrow about, to Austin about three-thirty, I think.
You traveled. Did you watch The King yesterday with the bagpipes?
We were here, we actually got stuck in a line, and The King and the Prince and all that passed us in their cars, we saw the whole thing.
Very cool. Good, good, good given.
On accident, but.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mike.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, it is four forty, and I will adjourn this meeting, this workshop, and I'll see everybody downstairs here in a few minutes. Thank y'all.